Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call the board supervisors meeting to order, let the record reflect it. Today is March 2nd and it's time of three o'clock. Is there an approval for the agenda?
So moved past here.
Motion on the floor, Mr. Ayers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to be led to the education, pledge allegiance, and vote, Mr. Q.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the sunshine. Thank you for the men and women that protect us and keep us safe on a daily basis. Dear Lord, we also ask that you give us guidance and wisdom and gratitude. We need such, so much more gratitude in this world. But thank you, dear Lord. We ask that you bless us, bless everyone here, in the Jesus name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we're going to open the floor for citizen comments. Is there anybody here wishing to address the board?
Yes.
You can come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I don't think I would be first, but this might be good.
Will you just make sure that the microphone is headed to the screen, okay?
This is wrong?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'm standing here before you, representing the community deals of Amos County.
Will you say your name and address?
My name is Kimberly A. Brinkley. I live at 360 O' Ross Chapel, Madison, Houston.
Okay, you're good.
Okay. I stand here before you to represent our community deals, the silent citizens of Amos County. Dear board members, my name is Kimberly A. Brinkley. I migrated from Hampton, Virginia, and moved to this area in 1977 at 17 years old. Can I take this off? Kimberly. At 17 years old, assuming everyone had the same moral compass, and to my surprise, they didn't. Being raised not to hate nor seek color was with the belief that all things are equal was my feelings in Amos County. While growing up in the area, I would always hear about the laws of the land. Why so much talk about the laws of the land, I would ask, I did not understand it. Then there were whispers, then there were whispers of why there were two doors on the bus, and explaining why they're still there. For some had the options of where to sit, while others, it was a law. Mama said it all the time, you will have to work harder to get ahead. I've learned that there are rules everywhere you go, especially here. There's a fear of intimidation that would keep most people from trying in this area. Knowing someone, being a part of something, a clique and or club, in order to be heard was the key. Striving to be honest and straightforward is my agenda for addressing the board, for my community and not myself. My success is based on my achievements and not by association. I'm bringing to you the whispers from my community. The fact that I am standing before you is an example of you listening to the community. While not perfect, each member of the board is here to represent the citizens of this community, whose mission is to promote liberty and high quality of life for our citizens. An idea was presented to the community leaders of Amos County, started back in September 2020, to create a community of support to those in need. Afterwards, a charrette was scheduled to solicit ideas for the public in regards to the property at Central Virginia Training Center. I'm not here to talk about my idea, but I will leave a few of my ideas here if anyone cares to review them. Excuse me. The consensus of the community is that their voice was not addressed in any form, shape, or fashion. The county submitted public input and formed a charrette. An idea was submitted on the advice of one of the community leaders. Being unfamiliar with the process of the charrette and relying on the alliance to take that into consideration, a population of the community felt it was ignored and unrepresented. The idea is to help the community's deals and to address the concerns of the community, believing it will be, it will set a great example for other communities to follow. The Fourteenth Commandment states, "All persons born and natural in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state where they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law, which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States. No shall any state deprive any person of the liberty or property without due process of the law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law," end of quote. If the leadership is broken, there goes the people, there goes the community. Martin Luther King said, "You must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools." From the movie, "A Men, The Fight for America," I paraphrase, we have to reach out to people who are angry and frustrated and want to strike out. If we don't do that, if we, if we have people feeling that some can have it and some cannot, we are all causing a war on our community and our country. Words have power. Words have the ability to change the world. In order for it to work, we must make a commitment to come together with all the people in the community. Albert Chemist quote, "We must mend what has been twain forth, make just as imaginable again any world," so obviously unjust, end of quote. Amos is a beautiful place to live. Let's welcome everyone and enjoy and embrace it. I end this by saying, there are, I know the mission of the board is to promote a higher quality of living for our citizens. I stand before you, asking you on behalf of the community, the community of the deals, that we do that. What they see as a high quality of life is going from not having food to having food. That's a higher quality of life for them. To be homeless and not have a home to go to, to be placed in an apartment, is a higher quality of life for them. When you have people that don't know how they're going to feed their families from day to day, we're in a crisis right now. We, there are needs and there are people. Our community, community deals, need us. So what we deem as a high quality of life, they don't. So the things that we pretty much take for granted is what they strive on, is what they live for. So I again come before the board, asking that maybe we could need the board, some of the members, to sit down with myself and a couple of community deal members and discuss how we can make their lives, their quality of life, a little better. And that's what I'm looking for.
Hey, Ms. Brinkley.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could you repeat the name of the group, what it's touching?
Um, the name of, I'm just here to represent the community of deals, which are the people in the community that have needs.
A bill?
Deals, I L L S.
That's what I did to your face.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak, or has there been comments? Seeing as you're now, we're going to close that. Uh, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor, Ms. Tucker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? motion carries, thank you. Moving on to whole business, budget discussion.
Yes.
And can you focus to the bottom? You have to be a little bit more specific. I'm not sure where she's at.
The second row of...
Yep. The both, the...
Oh no.
Daniel Rose. Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you, Tina.
That's all right. Turn around, right now.
Okay, this information that Stacy just handed out is the latest information for your consideration. The last budget workshop found the money that you needed to fund the items in the budget that you wanted. But as you read in the news, there are 5% pay raises being offered here, 4% the school division, and 3% in other places. And on top of that, we have other revenues that we found and other expenses that have, that need also to be included. So we're going to try to, the sheet in front of you is the one that you're familiar with, that you saw last time. But the bottom line is now different. So I'm going to let Stacy explain what we're looking for from you now in these latest adjustments. As we give the comp, the comp board employees, you're going to have to decide whether you're going to accept a 5% pay increase for them. And if you do, we need to match, we believe that we need to match that by the other county-funded employees that work for the constitutions. And then, and then how you want to adjust for other departments and so forth that are not included in the comp board raise. Hopefully, that's clear enough. Stacy will help muddy it up further.
Okay, first of all, on the sheet, the highlighted items are the cuts you all made last meeting, okay? Your notice at the bottom, the 42950, that's the additional revenue that came to light when I was working on some debt. Which now gives you $201,450 available, between the cuts and the revenue, that's available. I have had to adjust the goal from the 158.5 that we started, we had last meeting, to 175.5 because I was notified of an increase in our maintenance contract for our pay system. So our need is now 175.5. That's just for the stuff we had talked about before we get to the comp board issue. So the comp board can definitely, as long as the governor signs the budget, they'll will be giving a 5% increase to all constitutional officers and their employees July 1st. In order for us to meet the additional employees that we find and the amount of the salaries for the ones that are comp board funded, so let me, let me, an example would be, a deputy may be getting paid 45 by us, but the comp board's only paying 35 for that person. So we're having to make up the 5% on that difference. Plus, look, I think we have 14 that are not funded at all by the comp board. So we need $42,000 to make up the difference between what the comp board will fund and what we currently would have to pay for 5% for all constitutional officers and their employees. Which makes the need of 217.5. I have run multiple scenarios of, you know, we are currently budgeted for a 1.5 for county staff.
Can we stop there for just a second? I just want to make the point again, that that 5% increase, you have to accept that.
Well, they have to give the increase.
You have to, you have to give the increase. You have to, they'll give us the money if we give them the increase. If we give them the increase, then we need to give our 14, plus the little difference on everybody else, also.
Can you just help me understand a little bit, one thing you said. So let's say the sheriff's a bit, because we should, right? And the state says it's worth $35,000, right? But we pay them 45. We pay them more than what their three persons would want.
Correct.
Well, when they say they're getting a 5% raise, they're basically saying, are they saying, okay, instead of giving 35, now we're going to give 36,750, right?
Yes, sir. I calculated their share makes more than that.
Okay, but we're already paying next to us of what the state...
Correct.
They're really not giving them a raise.
They're sending us extra money to give to them.
But we're, okay, but we're already giving them more than...
Right, so their 5% is actually not a full, a 5% of their full salary.
Right, right, right.
It's, what you're trying to say is it's probably only a 2.5% raise, or a 2% raise on their total salary. And so your question...
We're not really giving them anything, because we've already been paying them.
Well, this, this state is giving them that.
Okay, so if, it's the, it's the, for me, it's the, the visual of it is that the state is giving us to all comp board employees, we do pay more, but we cannot supplant that salary with that 5% that they're willing to give.
Oh.
Okay, so we have to give an increase of 5% in order for the comp board to give us, but their share is a 5%.
So the state's only giving 2.5%, and then they want the county to give the other 2.5%? Is that right?
No, they'll give 5% based on the salary they offer us.
So if I can understand your question, they're giving us 5% on 35, but we have to pay 5% on 45, which is a bigger number. So they're not paying the full amount.
If we do not pay the 5% at all, you don't get the money, period. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Hey, may I ask a question, Chair? So, understand they're paying 5% on the 35, and we can't say, okay, give us the raise, and it reduces the delta between what they're paying and what we're paying. That doesn't work, we get that. But at this point, if we don't do anything, if we just say, we don't want your money, what happens?
Everybody gets 1.5% because that's what you built into the budget.
Does this, in the end, that that costs us less than what they're proposing?
Yes, right?
Yes, so let me, let me at least say this. Our department in social services will get 5% regardless. Just so you know, that that department will get it. We don't have to accept it. She normally works out, she doesn't come back and ask for local money for that. But they are getting 5% from the state. Okay? Um, so I have this worksheet, if you want to understand it, but I'll, I'll, it's for my benefit. I thought I printed it out, but I have two emergencies in a half hour. Okay, so if we do nothing, it's what we budgeted. The top of this worksheet, if you were to increase it at all, is how much additional funding the county would need. So let's say you did everybody a 5%, the county would need $286,000 additional funding for that.
And when you say everybody, you mean everybody, not, not constitutionals in their reports?
No.
You mean everybody?
Yeah, so if you go down below on the bottom half, if we did the constitutionals at 5% and everyone else at a different percentage, that's the amount of funding we would need at different levels of funding. Even at the 1.5, we would have to have the 42 that I told you about already.
So the top is constitutionals and staff. The bottom is just staff.
You may get, make that bigger.
I'm, I'm working on it, I just didn't want to make it too big. Let me see.
So, Madam Chair, because we took the initiative to help our folks out early and did it with our money, we're getting penalized because we could have just waited till now, couldn't we? Anyway, I'm just, I don't regret what we did all, we did the right thing. We did the right thing. My question is still the same one, if we don't accept the money, our people still are making more, they still got a raise, we're just, it's not just, it's not going to cost us more money.
Yeah, it won't be any money you can possibly, above and beyond.
So if we don't take their money, then...
And there's still being a 1.5%.
But that 1.5% raise, is that keeping everybody in the market, in the salary market?
That 1.5% is based on the existing real-life CPI.
Yeah.
For the last year.
Yeah, that's what I've always faced the follow-up of. And I did look up just by chance, and VRS is slightly less than what we're doing for their retirees. I'm sure once I have to go back down where we're getting, we're getting...
Right, Madam Chair, that's what I was going to bring up. We have to keep in mind that this 5% is to all the jurisdictions around us as well from the comp board, so those salaries will be moving up. We just worked on getting hours up, trying to be competitive, so we need to keep that in mind. Here too, if we want to remain competitive, then we have to make some adjustments to do so. Because all the other jurisdictions will be getting this percentage. So what's the cost just to do the constitutionals and the, is this 40?
If we do the constitutionals, then leave everybody else at 1.5?
Yes.
42,000.
Which has already been found.
Now you're going to...
Well, that's where I...
But there's some discrepancy there to the constitutionals, because you got some that are county-funded and some that belong...
Well, because my calculation is based on paying everyone in those, in those offices.
Okay.
To be equitable in the constitutional office, it won't be equitable across the county.
Right, so then, then in that situation you face, DSS gets a 5%, constitutionals get a 5%, the school board, which you learned last night, is moving toward 4%, and then county staff will get 1.5%.
Yeah, I don't think you can pick and choose. You can't say you get it and you don't get it, that's, that's not fair.
We're not choosing it, the state is choosing that. You know, the state is choosing to give the constitutional the rate.
But I'm, no, what I'm saying, David, is when it comes to constitutionals, you can't say, okay, you get some and you don't get some. I mean, I think that if we're going to do it, we gotta, we gotta take all the money and do what they had intended, I guess.
I agree, I mean, if we get, we discussed that last time, if you get one deputy, it's part of the budget. My novel is not, hope of your 5%.
Yeah.
And those numbers all incorporate that assumption. Those numbers express what you just said.
So that's the 42,000 already funded.
Well, no, whatever it says constitutional, it's all the constitutionals, no deputies are being left out.
Right.
And that's the 42,000, sorry, funded.
Well, you plan on that 42,000, yes.
So 1.5% increase is already, is, is funded for everyone.
Oh, but how much is it to give the constitutional the 5%?
If we give the constitutionals 5% and fund 1.5% for everyone else, we still need an additional $42,000. So I'm taking that note also. I told you I wouldn't understand my notes. That's, that's, so 80, I really cost 84. No. So...
It might be easier to go back to the budget cut portion. It looks familiar. So where we were, we didn't, with the HBA C, we needed about $170,000, right?
Correct.
To fund a 5, and that included the 1.5%.
Correct.
Now, if we have to give 5% to all the constitutionals, it bumps that number up to 201.
217.5.
Okay, yeah, you're right, 217.5, which is $42,000 more. We need to find, well, we've got 201, right?
You gotta find about 16.
Okay, cool. Yes.
What is the decision to only give the 5% to the constitutional? That's your question.
Well, we, I just need to know what you want to drive to find. Yeah, but that's still the question, what do you want? Do you want to hold steady at where you are? Do you want to fund 5% for constitutionals?
I don't think we can do a 5% raise forever before we can, yeah. You want to come in?
I, I could come up with something, but all of a sudden...
I'm fine with finding the additional revenue to fund what the state wants to do and go from there. I'm not, I mean, we can't have the state just, just giving the money this year when last year they withheld it from us. And we went ahead and gave raises to everyone last year, a big raises to the majority.
We gave a 2% cola increase to everyone, and we corrected 34 positions.
Yes, exactly. Extension, no limit.
If, just saying, if, if we went with all of your proposed budget cuts, that's 189,000?
Yes, ma'am.
So there is room to fund the 5% increase, I'm just throwing this out there. If we take all of your proposed budget cuts.
It is pretty close.
Okay.
Um... Let me do that as well.
Can I ask one more question? Ms. Cool, you explained this very well, I guess it's, it's hard for me to see. So, a deputy, the state says they're worth $35,000, right? And they give us $35,000, not that deputy. But since we know the market is different and, you know, we're having problems paying people, we pay them, let's just say 45, right? So now they're coming in and saying, oh, well deputies are really worth more, 5% more. So, you know, instead of 45, they're worth 47,000, 37,000. But, so we've already been paying them in excess of that, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I just don't get, since... I mean, if, if we had just took the, well, we wouldn't have been able to hire anybody for one thing, but you know, if we just said, okay, you're getting paid what the state says, you should be paid, we would have done.
But that's not, that's not correct. The comp board understands they're not paying full value.
Okay.
In some careers, they shoot for 60%.
But they're also not giving the rate, do they?
Well, no, they're, they're increasing the amount of money that they make available to the localities to pay for constitutionals. But I, 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 I think it would be unfair to say they think a deputy's worth only 35. I think they recognize that they don't pay the full value. They understand that, they know that, they'll, they'll say that in a lot of categories. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not, it's really just a matter of, given our historical form of government, where we have these separate constitutional functions that really could have been rolled into this government here, it's, they're kept separate. So the state assists with that by funding those separate constitutional authorities. And, and they only assist, they don't pay... And they only assist, they don't pay for the whole thing.
But we'd have to give a 5% raise based on forty-five, so.
That's the condition they placed on, you're going to give them a full 5%, we'll give you this much, but you've got to go with the difference.
So, is that why you were calling it the two and a half percent?
Yeah, exactly, usually, well, I know the scope, the county's got plenty of money, I mean, the state doesn't fund the whole 5%. They're only funding the 5% off of what the comp board salary is. And so, any more than we pay over the comp salary, we have to fund that portion of the raise.
How is the raise being couched, is it, is it COLA or is it just an increase in pay, what is?
I guess it's just probably salary increase.
Just salary increase?
And that is our final answer, or we're still waiting?
That is the memorandum that I got yesterday from the Commonwealth before, the budget bill had gone off of the government yesterday. So, but that, that is the half of it, the half of it.
Or COLA, it would be based on the consumer pricing mix, or the number of years since the last COLA catch-up.
So, you need to find a decision on who gets raised and what percentage is it?
Yes, ma'am. You wanted to get it up, and as you've observed, even all the cuts that are available to you, if you accepted all the cuts on that original worksheet, you could, you could.
You get cuts.
Get a close enough that we could go and search.
Is there any reason why you have?
This is version number two.
Is there any, is there any reason why you have to know now versus waiting to see if the governor makes any changes?
Well, I can't produce your budget document, it needs to be ready by the end of the month.
So, what's your recourse if he makes some changes to this?
I'll have to push it out, I guess.
Well, if there are helpful changes, then we can come back and bring you choices, but what is being proposed is I don't think it's going to get any worse for us.
The schools will be presented to you in two weeks, they're going to do it. And then on the, on the 30th is when I have intended to bring you the files I've been, since they go a couple of years. He could wait till June. So, I mean, but we can't.
And if it's, and if it's a softer hit on us, we can then adjust.
Later.
We can adjust down, we can't adjust up.
So, the question before us is whether or not we just want to, whether or not we want to do up everybody, and you think that you have found enough money to do everybody, is that right?
Sheet back up. The one, the one with the different percentage?
Yeah, that's whole, that's every.
Okay, so, so what I asked Stacy to do down at the bottom of the page there, assume the constitutionals get their 5%, you can take the money from the state. Those are the figures there, if we left it at one and a half percent, maybe you want to take everybody else to 2% or 2.5% or 3 or 4% rather than the full 5. So that you have other, other, to soften the blow, so to speak.
I think Ms. Ward would find out that you had almost 20, 15 of those cuts.
Yeah, you do have enough money, but they're, they have to take all the cuts that have been proposed.
What's the top portion?
This?
Yeah.
It's just, I started with this, we did it for the whole county.
So, that's the constitutionals plus staff. Down below is just staff.
That's recurring expenses you're going to have to pay every single year, so your hundreds, the money that you do give to the service authority, you'd have to wipe that completely out. So, that money would be gone for the upgrades to the sewer system in the failing areas that we have with the service authority. We made a decision last time we were here that we were going to fund the one and a half percent raise and then that, and found the budget cuts. I don't know why we'd go back and decide to increase this by three, four hundred thousand dollars more. And I think the one and a half percent for the county is what we all agreed to the last time we were here, we cannot control what the governor does with his budget. And so, I would be willing to come up with the additional extra funds to do the constitutionals, just leave it there, that's going to leave us in a good position going into next year. If we fund this, we are going to really be in a much worse position.
Thanks for that, I'm still trying to understand this. So, everyone, that is county employees, constitutionals, everybody across the board, 286,000. Now, constitutionals and everyone else, help me understand what that means.
The constitutionals get a 5% raise, that's constitutionals at 5%, okay?
Everyone else is?
Everyone else, which is just staff, not the schools, not the SS, just staff, they, there's options, four, three, two, one, one. That's, that's, the top is the whole, everyone, the bottom one is really just staff.
And includes those people that report to constitutionals that are?
Yes, they're included in constitutionals.
Okay.
Yeah, the, our funded deputies are constitutionals, they're included in.
This is non-constitutional offices, no school and no VHS, and we have everyone else.
And what is DSS, you know what she's doing for her votes yet?
State's giving 5%.
And she's made a, she's been finding her vote, so, we would have social services department getting 5%, constitutionals getting 5%, and everybody else getting?
Whatever you decide, right now it's one and a half. And I'm already hearing about the health insurance increase, first is the one and a half.
And the teachers will get what, four?
Four, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Uh, not just teachers, the entire school.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll show when they present your budget, but they're, they're getting lots of extra federal money. And also, a lot of their money is one-time money, and so, uh, well, I'm changing the subject. They're also adding a lot of positions, but they can do that, they contract for different teachers for, what, one year at a time. It's all COVID-related. But, but there was, and they've got a, I forget what it's called, a guarantee, that even though their enrollment is down, they're being paid at last year's level. There's a formula, like, they come out here.
Yeah, there's, there's all that lost money.
Yeah.
So, back, I'm sorry, back to where we were, if we do constitutional with 5%. More of the purple sixteen thousand above what you put. Today, that's very.
Anybody else have an opinion, because we got to decide this, so we'll go back and propose this.
I will, Ms. Ward.
In my heart, I see it as very unfair. But where do you come up with the money? So, you either give people the tools that they need to do it successfully, or you give them a raise and no tools or equipment? And so, that's the balance we have.
So, the difference, if you want to look at that, is the items that you would change would be five thousand for building code enforcement, five thousand for park maintenance, five thousand for landscaping, fifty-five, oh, that's where I lost, yeah, we can never actually do it all then. Fifty-five, two forty-six of school capital, taking the solid waste cut all the way at fifty-five, fifty-two-five, five thousand for feed and oil, five thousand more for election officials, and the entire ACSA constitution. That is how you get to the two six, to cover the two six.
I'm sorry, I don't see how that's realistic.
Oh, I don't, no, I'm just showing you the ones that are.
Available still.
That, that would be added in order to get you to something else, other than the one and a half.
That's where the pain would be felt, to go above one and a half percent.
So, in my mind, I'm saying, okay, we got people that are working on parks and stuff, but hey, we're going to pay you more, but you can't paint buildings, or you can't do more landscaping.
Oh, well, in some of those areas, right, but the whole, the rest of the O and M budget is fine, is as it's been approved. Everyone will be quite busy maintaining what we have. And remember, you, you made those cuts in yellow because you saw historically that they could be absorbed. You haven't used all that money in painting in the past, so that's why you could take it out of there.
School construction though has to remain at maybe about that point, am I correct?
It does not have to, but the schools are counting on it.
So, if we take that away, then we just put a hole in the schools budget?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I, can we do it, of course we can do anything, but I don't think that that's realistic. You know, the lunch officials, they have no idea what they're facing this November. The parks, the way we talked about, everybody wants, we want people to build our parks, but we're not going to maintain, and we're not going to paint, and we're not going to do the upkeep to them.
And can we bring it, we're just going to look for sixteen thousand dollars? But forty-two dollars, I mean, sixteen bucks.
Well, you need sixteen dollars, because I had to take seventeen for building education.
So, everybody's in agreement, 5% constitutional, one and a half for county staff? That's what you're asking, to find the missing dollars, that's, that's, you agree on?
Well, we'd already agreed for one and a half, and the state, if that stayed the same, we'd get a good constitutional spending. So, really, the only thing where we can debate on is whether or not we're going to provide this stuff, or not. And if we are, we need to cut over sixteen thousand dollars above what, what's Wilks' budget. I mean, actually, she's done us a great service in buying the quarter two, running, probably wouldn't sit here trying to find. Or whatever it is. Right, so.
You can, you do have the option, not that I'm having to take them for this, just so you remember, it is your choice to take that 5% from the state. And you hold everyone at 1.5 or at 2% or whatever, you just don't get the money from the state.
Yeah, well, it's a term, Mr. Harris, if we're on the accounting, we can make a little bit of a difference. Because this is your floor. Madam Chair? Ms. Wilks, do you know what that figure actually will be from the state? Ballpark.
Um, ballpark, probably around 130,000.
That is their total contribution toward this 5% increase, 130,000.
And 5% for all the county staff was about 570, I think? But, but we've already budgeted 172, so that's why I came up with the 286, we need an issue. Uh, so, yeah, so, um, yeah, it's about 130.
So, it'd be 130,000 recurring revenue that we would turn left on. So, there's 130,000, if they give 5%, you can get to 130,000 from?
The expense is 200 plus?
Yes.
That they're, that you will incur? Does that make sense? Like, you're incurring 200 plus for the 5%, but they're only going to give you 130,000.
130,000. But you, I mean, you can ask for it next year, if you don't take it now, it's done, I mean, that's, that's it, it's done.
They have been nice a couple of times and let us supplant other revenue, like other pay that they did this time.
So, we'll go back to the same question, constitutional 5%, do we accept that money?
I would say yes.
I'd say yes, too.
We get a motion?
I would say yes, too, but, but then, you know, we've got 17,000, and then that's where, I mean, that's the question, you are trying to fund more than 145?
Less than the last question.
I'm not at this point.
But constitutional, the 5% that everybody agreed, and then we need a motion vote where you're asking us?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that's a decision that you're making about state money, I think that needs to be official. Motion invoked, and we're like, we've informed the Congress, we are officially accepting that money.
Anybody want to make that motion? Anybody?
Before we do that, can we look and discuss where we would find 16, if I can find out the column? I believe it's important if we're moving forward for others to take a vote.
We need to find 16,000 on this.
Really, you're, you're comparing columns F and H to see if there's any wiggle room?
Well, first of all, okay. Sorry, what we doing here?
Whatever's in F, you can move to H, or some amount less than this.
So, building and code enforcement is the very first thing that is the difference, do we want to take anything from building and code enforcement?
Oh, F and H was the same, twenty-five and twenty-five.
Well, they were, because you moved all 25 as a cut, you took all 25.
We didn't move everything from F into H.
Yeah. So, F, A, F is what's available, H is what you choose. And man, you already chose to take it all. That's why in, in maintenance and landscaping, you didn't take the 5,000 that was available to you, you left that off for taking.
Is the 5,000 available or is it 15?
Well, we're, well, the total budget is 15, we're proposing that you take, you could take 5, that would drop their budget down to 10.
Free said top room?
You need to split screen.
Not the freezing. Freezing.
Split the screen and then you just slide down. So, yeah, I apologize, I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting. So, the personnel, personnel contingency costs, the past two fiscal years. There's nothing spent.
Which one?
The very top one.
Okay, so that personnel contingency, when we use it, we move it to the departments that need it, so we never spend money out of there.
But have you ever moved it out?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it helps with retirement, it helps with retention, it helps with grade adjustments mid-year that we have to make, and it makes, and sometimes.
And it helps deal with compression, too.
Yeah, it just depends, um, it's definitely a useful part. It just doesn't show there because we give it to the department that needs it.
So, when the Commonwealth's attorney needs to pay top dollar to get this attorney, then he really just has to hire. Well, he does, he pays top dollar, well, now everybody else's salary and his office is a little bit messed up. And so, we have to say add to their salaries to keep them all in their relative positions, based upon their work and their seniority, so that's just an example of compression.
I know that the contributions we are making to the service authority were good faith contributions, but my argument has always been that attempting to make a big difference in sewer and water hookups, that end of the county, doing it this way was like throwing salt in the ocean. And we had to have a bigger and grander plan, whether it be bonds or whatever. So, to me, the easiest way to solve this problem is to take it out of ACSA contribution.
That's our sixteen?
Yes.
So, we'd really be taking only 30,000? The very, uh, what I was, what we need is? The very, uh, what happens if, what would we need to, 12, 15, or 30,000? 20,000? Oh, 20, yeah. Drop them down to? 150, that's, we did, we did that, I, I could, we didn't all, uh, I guess nobody wants to touch the building, so we, we're, we have not cut anything out of that. We took it out, 5,000 dollars out of that, and that was the proposed cut, but we chose to keep it up.
Stacy, did you take, did I say that you took the money out of the school funding?
I did that on the other sheet, just to see if we, if we took all the cuts that were proposed, if we would get the money that was needed for the 5%.
So we'd have to take the money from the schools to give everyone 5%, we'd have to take the money?
So no, I have not touched, there's still a.
But it's not there anymore, so we're together.
No problem.
You got the budget, that's there.
No, I just, there was a question a while back as to whether we had enough money to get to the 286, and so I went over there, plugged in the numbers, and if we got there.
Without touching that.
This is y'all's worksheet right here.
Did we, or did we not remove the 56,000 from the school?
We did not.
Okay.
There is, there is still room in building code enforcement, park maintenance, landscaping, school construction, and heating oil, and election officials, and the Service Authority.
Which I think we had a good argument last time for keeping those ones there.
Yeah.
Right, I'm right, I'm right.
I think mine is most painless approach.
And it still gives the Service Authority 150,000?
Correct.
I'm okay with that. So now we need the motion for acceptance in the found a reason from state?
You're going to, you're gonna, you're gonna institute a 5% base from the constitution?
Constitutional, and you'll fund the necessary amount of money needed from the acts of contribution. 16,000 that you need to make that happen will come from the acts of contribution. Well, that doesn't need to be part of the motion, that's just what we understand how we're gonna vote for, and how we'll present it in the question.
I see a motion that says you're overbringing a 5% increase for all constitutional officers and their employees, and one and a half percent for county staff.
Well, that was hard.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board accepts the funding from the state to do a 5% salary increase for constitutional officers.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote, motion carries.
And Madam Chair, I would further make a motion that we accept the, after 522 proposed O and M budget cuts that is currently shown on this screen.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote, motion carries.
Will that satisfy to cover the record for the Service Authority when its contribution gets reduced to 150,000?
Is that ongoing, or just this year?
Well, it'll be built into the budget, rather than, rather than 179, it'll be built into the budget at 150,000.
For this year?
For this year.
Yeah, okay.
Then we'll start over before that happens.
Okay, great.
The other thing, now Stacy goes without meetings, can't right?
Yeah, that, we went up to something.
And for that, are you ready to move on to new business?
Unless anybody has any questions about the, the schedule, you can see what we crossed off.
Yeah, I can't tell what's the, typically, the second Tuesday of each month, I cannot see. Sometimes 4/2, if I have, got me hung up last time.
Yep, there's only one of those in there, and that is because of deadlines, student by deadlines, that's our annual 10 minutes meeting.
March 30th? No, that was, that's on, that's the 6th Tuesday.
Yeah.
I think the 27th of April is the 4th Tuesday.
Okay. That should be fine, that's, yeah, okay.
So what change have you just raised?
No, I'm just.
We eliminated some workshops, so like, next Tuesday, there won't be a workshop, the next, on the 16th.
Everything is on here, so it's the same.
The ones that are struck, struck out are, we don't, we're not doing.
Right.
Moving on to new business? Redistricting committee?
Yeah, sure.
Second row, that's it.
Well, then, hit the screen. Okay, well, I will talk about the redistricting committee. The Virginia Constitution requires that local governments that elect their governing body members from districts to redistrict every 10 years in response to the decennial census. The US Census Bureau has completed the decennial census for 2020. As Amber's County elects its members from five electoral districts, either must fund its electoral districts, as currently structured, meet all applicable legal requirements, or it must redistrict through the decennial redistricting ordinance. You have two items that are attached, number one, there's a legal requirement, paper attached. There's also a resolution that's got to establish the organization of the committee. I will point out, the committee is generally structured in the resolution, 11 members. We were asking you, as a board member, to appoint a member from your district to be part of the committee. The chair of the committee is the chair of the Board of Supervisors, thank you. And then there's some staff that's, that's part of that to make up the full 11 members. That, we do understand that the Census Bureau has asked for an extension, but what we're trying to do is get ourselves structured, so this resolution for you is to help us structure, again, the process, and get ourselves organized before we have the data for the Census Bureau. So the recommended motions that board adopt resolution 2021-0004 are, as presented, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes. So let's talk about time for a minute, we're supposed to be recommending somebody from our district. What, what, like, do you guys have a plan to hang, they've been looking at?
That's a great question, and so that hasn't been set, that would need to be set by the committee. Generally, when we met, I did this 10 years ago, we met once a month. It could be more, it could be less. But last time, it was a lot easier, because our districts, the districts have to change 10% for us to make changes, so we, we've made a recommendation to make no changes, so it was much easier. I can't tell you for sure until we get the census numbers that the districts will change. If they do, I doubt it'll be significant, but that's certainly something that could change the dynamic of the committee.
And what do you need to name for?
Well, you'd go, if you approve the resolution, you'd start working on that now, and then we must start organizing the committee.
Right, could you provide us with the citizen members from last time?
There was only one.
There was only one, and I believe at the time, I think it was, it was Brown, it was Juanita Roper, so.
I think it was, yeah, because I was, I was here.
And she was, I think she was the one citizen member, the only dis, difference with this structure, again, would be that we would ask that you fund one member from your respective district.
So you want to pass citizen membership status, instead of just the one we had before?
Correct.
And the reason for that is because redistricting has become a real issue, politically.
And, I mean, these 2020 census, the data will not be out until September 30th, so, I mean, that's when they're gonna release it, I think that's what I've read, if that's correct, so we've got a little bit of time to try to find someone for these positions.
It could be a while, yeah, I mean, I think that's right, we, we wanna get the structure set up, but, but we're not under any timeline that the Census Bureau is not already under right now.
Yeah, I don't, how are they gonna, because they got a redistrict, and then the election's gonna take place from September 30th, that's, how's that gonna happen?
Well, it used to be that we need, they needed to have their decision by the 1st of August, so that, so that the registrar could run an election based on the new districts. But that assumes that the Census Bureau gets its data out now, and it's already late, and we don't know when it's gonna come out. So what happens if it comes out in April? Well, then, maybe if there's not a lot of change, they could get it done by August, and we could have ours done in place. So we're just trying to be ready and not dull and get behind in April. So it would be nice if you could identify a citizen who will be here through the summer and fall, maybe by the end of March. I hope you have somebody in mind whose judgment that you respect, who, you know, maybe doesn't reflect one particular party, or group, or another, and ask them if they would be willing to serve. And if they give you a yes, then just give us their name, and then we'll communicate with them directly and answer all their questions.
Yeah, I believe the names have to be approved by this board, is the way it's forwarded for us. I already got one there. But, Madam Chair, I'm, Mr. Brian, so, I, I was involved in this a while back, for the city, and basically, what I remember is that we had to look at the population of the, um, the districts and precincts, and make, you know, and at that time, there were also looking at race, but, um, you know, what I'm getting at is the majority of this work is gonna be done by staff at the ass, right?
Correct.
And the, the citizen group, that's gonna be looking, and that's kind of verifying. You know, the, you can't move the population, right, it is what it is at that time. I don't think there's gonna be a tremendous amount of, of, for us, I agree, but, I agree, it's gonna be a lot of time for you.
Sure.
All right, so we're looking for a moment.
Yeah, one more question, Jeremy, so Jeremy, even if, let's just say that, is this a town where you could move the lines, because where they are right now just doesn't make sense, and moving them half a mile might make a boundary cleaner?
Yeah, we have to keep them within 10% of the populations of each electoral district, that's why geographically, yours is so much better, that bigger than this more's, because of the population difference, we have to keep each of those electoral districts within 10%.
Right, I understand that, but if cleaning up a line doesn't change the percentage numbers of the population in the district, is this an opportunity where you could do that, or does it have to be driven by population?
I think it has to be driven by population, but I would defer, that, that debate we would probably have as we get into this, generally, it's driven by population.
Yes, it's certainly driven by population, it, it's, there is the possibility, I'm not gonna just tell you that you can't do it, but you also don't wanna do it and make it look like you're gerrymandering the district. There's gotta be a legitimate reason to change it, so that you're keeping the district, you know, compacting it. Like, if it doesn't make sense that the boundaries here, and those few people over here have nothing to do with this group on this side of the block, then moving it is legitimately a possibility, because you're still within the legal confines of what you're tasked to do. You just have to make sure that those population numbers are at, are equal.
Any other questions?
I'm sure I'll move the resolution, and, I think that Kenneth Campbell will be the representative for this report.
All right, there's much on, what about Mr. Martin, all in favor, say aye. Any votes? Congratulations, Campbell for us.
Will do, and Mr. Martin's right, you will have to appropriate your, your name to the board, so, for future meetings, if you'll work with county staff, so we can get it before you, but one, one down the fort ago.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, we received a request from Neighbors Helping Neighbors, they're expanding a parking area. In order to do so, they, they're required to submit an erosion settlement control plan to the county. The plan review is 500 dollars, additionally, there's a land disturbance fee of 35 dollars. Neighbors Helping Neighbors is requesting that the Board of Supervisors reimburse their total fee of 535 dollars. We gave you two possible motions, one to approve the, the request for 535 dollars, the second to deny. Any questions for staff?
Or any questions, Mr. Martin?
So, I understand this is not something that's been a precedent, but what would you do, is the way to make the plans?
It doesn't come often, I talked to Mr. Prof this morning, and, have you said for your man, I believe, has received some waiting up fees in the past. It's not common at all for the county to wait fees. Actually, the county has looked at internally at this policy, because we require other departments to pay their own fees. So, for example, if Mr. Thacker in Public Works is working on a project, we ask him to pay his fees, so it passes through and for accounting purposes. But we've also been working, uh, in debating internally, this question.
Yeah, I mean, I get to, I guess we'll get into the, these fees, the permit fees, they also don't offset your budget.
Well, the permit fees, they, they go to the general fund, yes, sir.
Which?
Yes.
For your salary, did it take you any less time to review this?
No.
Well, the other thing, you might, the board did, and good faith, just give them 500 dollars as part of a nonprofit.
1500 in the budget.
15, my, my.
Well, I move, I move that the Board of Supervisors deny the request.
The motion on the floor by Mr. Doo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries. Moving on to the county infrastructure report, board's divisions, that's just for our knowledge.
Uh, yes, ma'am, to let you all know that we're searching for these positions, and if you are aware of individuals that might serve, please let us know, and we'll contact them. The other item that I wanna bring up, assuming that you all will bring up the building committee member for the school board, um, I wanna just, I don't wanna get out in front of the board, so I wanna, I wanna inform you of some taskings that I have given to Public Works. You know, we, we have our landfill equipment, we have skilled operators now, they are running efficiently, and sometimes weather permitting and events permitting, they can take on additional projects. As you saw, they successfully repaired the, the Blue Ridge Rail Trail, had a great savings to us, they're great, they're quite skilled. And so I've asked them to do a variety of things. One of them is actually already done, Lynchburg Road, the, the road that runs along the express, the bypass, and that would normally pass in front of the training depot, and then passes in front of that house down to Depot Road. We have cleared the trees to that, we are working with PDOT to try to obtain some special money that's available to towns for them to pave that section, and allow there to be a straight shot off the expressway onto Depot Street, and not have the patrons of the new brewery driving through, driving out through the neighborhoods. So I, they've done that for me. Another project I've given them to do, they, they just touched on it a little bit, but there's more to come, is Horseboard Road. Horseboard Road is that road, when you go down to the end of Main Street, in Old Town Maxon Heights, and then you climb up to Stumps Hill, right there at that low point, you can go right down to the river, the park, but there's a concrete area on the left, it's blocking what was Horseboard Road, and it was overgrown with kudzu and fallen trees and so forth. And I have asked them to clear that road, and then at the end of that road, which reaches to county property, which reaches to River Edge Park, there is a foot trail that goes all the way down to the park, and comes out right at the far edge. and comes out right at the far edge of the Blue Stone Amphitheater, that one acre open area with the rocks behind it. And so what they'll do is widen and level that to make that as a pathway available for the people of Madison Heights to get down to the park. One day, it would be nice if we could pave or stone it and maybe even light it. But I've asked them to do that. Central Park, Central Park, the dog park behind Feltz Road School. Waukesha Development is going forward with their portion of the park. The engineering study came back at a cost of about $400,000 to do the whole thing. Much of it is grading. And so I've asked, as you know, water ponds up on top and it needs to flow off and down the hill. And so I've asked Public Works if they can work on that as they can. And then we can work on installing the pavilions and the exercise stations and the playgrounds as we move along through time. Waukesha agrees with this. They think that's an outrageous sum and that we can probably together do the whole thing out of height much easier and more cheaply. It'll take longer, but it won't cost as much. I've asked, I've asked Public Works to cut a foot trail around each of our lakes. At least as far as they can before they get onto private property. And they'll have to talk to the property owners about getting permission to allow a circumnavigation trail so that people can hike around the lakes if they wanted to. The, our new recreation and tourism director is working, is already meeting with the mountain biking clubs about getting their assistance to help with that trail building too. As you know, we own 100 acres down below the jail that is topographically challenged for building. But that watershed down below the jail empties out down into James River. And so as time and resources permit, if we can cut a trail up through there, at least people, citizens can make use of that area until some business is willing to invest the money it takes to hold those flat places in there somewhere. Public Works is already working on expanding the parking lot at Rose's Mill. And as we get in, as we get the bridge over the ravine, the culvert in place, and we can cross over onto the CVTC property, we'll ask Public Works to do whatever leveling and clearing is necessary to help get the next section of trail ready. We may not need to pave that. We may be able to just stone that. And if that's the case, we might be able to do that in house too and save us a million dollars. So, you know, as you see these things happening and wondering where the resources are coming from, that's, that's what's happening and that's why. Does anybody have any questions?
Or any questions?
I'm sure. I think that's great you can do them. My only question is, is that they are following the Oregon Southern Patrol for More Management Plan when you see those thresholds are.
Right. Especially around the lakes. And we have to be especially careful over the sewer line.
Mr. Martin, what is, what is the threshold?
10,000 square feet.
10,000. So if you go that, you need the plan stone.
Any other questions? Board?
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the County Insurance Report.
I have nothing.
Oh, I, one other thing, just for you two on the Ag Complex Subcommittee, we've moved the location to the Amherst Middle School down on 60 East.
And the time is still?
The time is still 5:00 PM.
That's when, May 10th meeting.
Yes, sir, March 10th.
And you are making it, you are making it available for 10 virtually, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That Zoom link has already been published.
Thank you. Moving on to the Asian Committee Reports. Your own purpose, Doo, on the planning commission.
Well, this shouldn't be too hard considering that the planning commission meeting was canceled due to inclement weather. So there's nothing to report as far as planning commission goes.
Thank you for that. Any? The Joint Board Committee, Ms. Tucker and I are responsible for this. Do you want to talk about it, Claudia, or you want me to?
No, go ahead. I gotta do the act thing. I don't need to do that anymore.
Oh, there's, it's not a spot for you. Okay. For the Joint Board Committee, we got the school, two folks from the school board and the superintendent. They are coming to us with level funding, so no additional dollars. You correct me if I'm wrong. And they are looking for a member of this board to sit on the building committee for projects, talking about construction projects that they have for the school.
Yes, ma'am. In particular, they're gonna be talking about the new auditorium.
So we're looking for a board member that wants to sit on that. And we thought maybe the one or the two that sit on the building?
All on the building committee.
Would want to do that. And we couldn't remember who the second one was.
I'm all. I enjoy doing it.
You want to join us? Perfect. Let's go ahead and make that a motion for Mr. Martin.
Make the motion that Mr. Martin has said on the joint, on the building committee for the school.
Thank you. Motion on the floor of Mrs. Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any votes?
I'm assuming they'll find that.
Yes. Mr. Martin, will you give?
Yes, ma'am.
Claudia, all in 10 information. So Claudia, I think you're gonna talk about act committees, am I correct?
Well, he already said, I was just gonna make up here. Just tell everybody that the stakeholders meeting is March 10th at the middle school at 5 o'clock. Stakeholders that we identified from both Nelson and Amherst will be invited and there's a Zoom ability. That's all I was gonna say, which he already said.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, at this time, we went up the floor for citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will close that and move on to matters from the members of the board. Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Ayers?
Go ahead.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Doo?
No.
I have nothing. And are we moving into closed session? Tucker, you have the motion.
I made the motion that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors wanted closed session pursuant to sections 2.2-371183 of the Code of Virginia 1950s amended for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property with discussion in an open meeting whenever effect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public bodies specifically relating to a public trailer, park site, and District 1 in fact.
There's a motion on the floor, Ms. Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any votes? You want me to close this? There's a motion on the floor, Ms. Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? Move into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors come out of closed session.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All in favor, say aye.
I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors, certified by a recorded vote, at the best of each board member's knowledge on the public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Union Freedom of Information Act identified in the motion authorizing the closed session were or discussed or considered in the closed session.
Mr. Ayers?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Uh.
Mr. Pugh?
Uh.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I think the motion will be adjourned.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, everybody.